I'd like to call it a order of March 28, Palatine County Board of Supervisors Workshop. Mr. Plon, you do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Carmack, you do the indication.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, bless this day and Palatine and guide us as we seek to be the people's business. Amen.
Any requests pushed upon agenda items, additions, deletions, changes in the oral presentation. Hearing any, we get a motion for approval of your agenda. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Mr. Shaw, can you administer your updates?
Uh, no updates for you this evening.
Public comment period. Public wishing to speak. Boards of. Not seeing anyone. We're having a long zoom. Close the public commentary. We'll get right to work.
Okay, so continuing our discussion on FY24 budget. And so when we had our last workshop, or workshop prior to that, I guess, we had presented on budget scenario based around a seventy-five cent tax rate. I got some feedback from the boards, met through the different department budgets, where you all might like to see things funded or not funded. As well as you all wish to see two scenarios, one for how we proposed to fund a seventy-three cent tax rate. And then one at seventy-three with P B T R A relief. So we have both of these here for you tonight to go through, as well as updates to our financial forecast, how would you go with budget factoring that. Then we'll talk about the school board transfer, as well as options for the school health insurance initiative that they have asked us to consider. And then look at the calendar and remaining steps and dates moving forward that we go through will be budget process. So here, this will show you the proposed budget without the personal property relief. So it has to be based on a seventy-three cent tax rate. So first would be a reduction to get us to that rate. Then one change would be previously, we typically budgeted for delinquent taxes. So as you know, we set our collection rates in the budget at ninety-five and ninety-seven percent for real estate and personal property. But in reality, we ended up collecting more than that throughout fiscal year because of prior year delinquent taxes that are coming in regularly. That was not in last year's budget, but it is real money that comes in. And historically, we budgeted for that, so we're proposing to put that back in, in combined real estate and personal property. We believe a hundred thousand would be a good figure for FY24 delinquent collections. Then, since we initially built the budget with personal property relief, this would take a million off for that. Again, we'll get the scenario that includes that next. We had talked about the transportation manager position and that being funded by C B T A revenue that we get. And that was something that we wanted to not do this year and look at possibly in the future, so that's been removed. Goochland Palatine Community Services Board, when it was late last year, we adopted or entered the new rental agreement with them for their portion of this building. That included an increased rent. We had not factored that into the budget, so that's just trues up with what that latest rental agreement proposed and agreed to. And then a reduced use of fund balance. Then looking at expenditure changes here, one, reduce school transfer of five hundred thousand. So we discussed in going to reducing the tax rate, sharing in those cuts with schools and being able to score representatives here with us tonight. Also reducing C I P. So was these proposals show a very reduction in C I P? And this would be pushing out some of the I T fiber project. Still do some in FY24. It would push others to future fiscal years, and it might be a good idea anyways, because we're still exploring with schools the opportunity of working with them. Connect their facilities to our fiber and the potential to use E-rate either for construction or rental payback. So we're still talking to the state to see if that's an option and how that works rather than using general fund dollars. At the last workshop, two constable officers requested increases for their chief deputies, which are in here. Then one, clerks without a corresponding production class of comp, so essentially taking that same amount from that and doing it earlier. And then sheriff, we had spoken about his initial request for four new deputies in vehicles, but that three would still be an improvement over current what he has. So the proposal would be to add three, not be four. Current budget FY23 has two deputy county administrators. I don't believe we needed this time to, so we've been removing what is my former position. And then we have an unfunded, or sorry, unfilled part-time admin associate position. That would be unfunded. And then had talked about the storm water management program, taking that over from the state. And that's still something we should look at long term, but even if we want to do it, it takes time to take that from the state. We have to pass an ordinance with all kinds of things. We have to find somebody who's actually certified in that program. So I think we should look to it in the future, but it is just not something we'll do in this budget. I T had requested two promotions to employees. One of them is still in there and proposed, but this one is something I think we take some more time with and look at in the future, but not do in this budget. Then commercial inspector or building official had requested a commercial inspector. Currently, he does a lot of those inspections. The other inspectors are certified in residential and have the option to get certified in commercial. Throw in some of that, but that may take some time. So he felt there was a need for this. We have some more information on the urban levels, but not knowing how things will go this year, where the economy will go, what building will look like. We're proposing to hold off on that one for now, but if building continues at the rates we've been seeing, it's probably something we need to look at. Our current building official, he's done a very good job of leading that department, finding advances in technology, efficiency, customer service. And we want him to keep doing that, pushing us ahead, not just being the lead building inspector and being out in the field all day long, inspecting. And also doing some of that, also helping grow his people. So if we get too busy, we don't need delaying. But again, this is one thing we could take some more time to look at. And we have some options for third-party plan review that we can do to kind of shave the peaks. Over too long in the time, that ends up becoming expensive, and then you're better off just have a full-time position. But if we have some busy weeks, busy months, that is an option to get us through. Again, removing the transportation manager. The original proposal had a engineer, utility engineer in it. But we also believe there would be value in turning to a director of public works, who presumably that person would be an engineer. So proposing to fund that rather than utility engineer position. Then economic development assistance. We currently have one that is part-time. Part of my higher duties, as seven you guys demonstrated, were in economic development. So stepping into this new role, kind of backfilling some of that work by taking this part-time position and elevating it to full-time. Primarily what this person would do would be out leading businesses in the community. So that we're finding out what the issues are, what the opportunities are, and staying connected to business and community. That's the general reconciliation salaries, as well as departmental reading budgets. Reductions to utilities transfer and reduction in maintenance service contract for building inspections. So that is a summary of what changed from the prior seventy-five cent proposed budget to get us to a seventy-three budget without the T R A relief. Go to the next. This will show how that shows in the model. So with all of those initiatives and revenues plugged in with that tax rate, that is what the model projects for our future fund balance. And then this would be essentially that same budget, but with one million dollars of P B T R A relief. We had proposed to do that a targeted manner. It could be done generally across the board, but then when you take that million, it sounds like a lot of money. You spread it across all the vehicles in the county. It's not something people are really going to notice on the bill. So we had proposed, again, a million if you do a targeted relief for certain vehicles below forty-five hundred. Correct? Yeah, be able to forty-five hundred or less. So then other changes here would be reduces the fund balance again, a different amount. We would be reducing more of our C I P. Again, that's pushing out some of those fiber projects. Those are the differences between this and the other. This is how this one, you can see, still projects to have the fund balance above fifteen percent. But we come closer to that in those further years. And again, that's, that's pretty far out just modeling. That's what the additional million dollars would do to our projections. And then talking about the school board transfer. So between the, the House bill budget, the Senate budget, and then their city budget, there is varying versions to do or don't include the additional two percent raise. That would get it to seventy in the state. So the school's budget has the five percent, not the two percent. That's based on the state's city budget, which does not include the two percent. But both the House and Senate are still proposing two percent there. So we're proposing to include that in our budget, essentially the worst-case scenario, so if it happens, there is funding for it. And then a similar reduction of five hundred thousand to, again, share in those tax cuts to get us down to seventy-three cents. And then one large initiative the school board had asked us to look at is health insurance. So getting on the same, same program, same thing that's that the county offers our employees. So a couple of different ways this could or could not be done. One, if we were to go with the seventy-three cent scenario, you could take roughly that same million that we're proposing for personal property relief. And instead, put it towards this. If the board wished to do a similar budget, keep the personal property relief and cover the schools, then we would need to go back to the original proposal, seventy-five cents, which would cover that. We could also make no change to what we presented here in the local transfer, and then the school board can decide, can they do that? And maybe potentially not do it. We could also find, you know, potentially a way to fund it. A portion of it, probably not the whole thing. I don't think there's that much in there to, to remove, but that, that would be a decision they would have to make. And then also, we can do what we've done in some prior years, is pass a tax rate, pass our budget, but only pass a portion of the school's budget. And wait to see what happens with the state and which version of their budget they adopt, because they may or may not include that two percent. There's also some pretty big differences in the revenues, particularly the sales tax, that the state's variant budgets are proposing. So some fun notes in that, where if we did this, then we can make some decisions at a later date on the budget, having that information. That went with a pass a tax rate, so limits us in some regard, but we still have better information from the state that on background. So that's. That's where we're at currently with these proposals. And then we turn with the schedule real quick, then we can get into the discussion. So here we are tonight, March twenty eighth. We have a meeting April third. That one is at six thirty P M. And at that, to keep would be schedules and notices that you need to go out, going to adopt a tax rate. Instead of treasurer and commissioner of revenue, having time, you need to put out those notices. And then decide what location we want to advertise, and we can put out those notices, which have to be given paper by April sixth. And at last night's meeting, we opened the public hearing on the tax rate, but kept it open. So there'll be another opportunity at this April third workshop, six thirty P M, to, for the public to speak on the tax rate as well. Then, April twenty-fourth, we propose a public hearing on our budget and mandate fee schedule. And then we have May first special meeting, again, at six thirty, to adopt budget and C I P.
Can we go back to the.
You got a question. Go ahead. Absolutely. Take off.
Can we go back to the first slide with the seventy-three cents where you listed all the changes? We have decided to keep the full-time domestic violence. I don't see it up there, and that was something. Carmack, you, early on, said you didn't think it was a full-time job. And then we've talked about that since then. And so, if it's not a full-time job, it needs to be a part of this.
Yeah, and had some brief discussions with our director of social services about that. And I think there is the possibility it could be part-time. I mean, some duties of it could be part-time. We're concerned it'd be hard to find somebody who'd be interested in taking that on as a new program. And then with the hours and all COVID would require to do it as a part-time, but could we add that in a full-time position? And some of those duties, some of that time is used to cover other areas in social services. I think that's definitely, definitely a possibility. We could, we could certainly try to fund it as part-time and see what we get. There might be somebody great out there that is interested in a part-time job. I just know we've had some difficulty filling those in the past, and this one particularly. Just don't know about the prospects of finding somebody, but it would be an option.
Do we have anybody on staff that can do it part-time? Are they all functioning, all the functions that they are tackled, or they're all part of, part of the social services functions? Or they're doing things outside of that? So is there, is there room within the existing people, existing staff? It's a question.
Yeah, I don't know. I can pick some information quickly for you on that and see if we were to go part-time or if we were to try and do that more in-house, who can take that on.
Me. Kind of planning for him. Young man who's, so many even more duties, okay, he's stretched, but he's doing the environmental case along with his others, so I just, is that a possibility? The economic development, John, I don't, we really haven't talked about that, John, does, why it's needed, they need the details on it.
Yeah, I think economic development is a bigger thing. We should at some point probably have a workshop with the board. Cause we, I think it was twenty eighteen, we kind of relaunched that initiative. The board did a comprehensive strategic plan, then we worked to have a more slim implementation plan. And then we went about implementing that. Our Ms. Salerno was our first full-time staff in some time, and I worked in that area with her. We've had some workshops with the E K A, but we haven't had a comprehensive discussion of our program, what we do, how it's going. What you might see done differently. So, you know, I can tell you that she's working every day closely with our business community. More and more developing projects with applicants that are looking for, either trying to find a site or just need some guidance through the permitting process. Workforce, a number of issues, or I'm buying more of her time and not getting out in the needle businesses one-on-one directly as much as we would like. And I think that's meeting with our businesses is important part of our economic development program. One, it provides that kind of personal touch that I think is important to us, and something people like. But it also helps us find out what are the issues in our businesses and how can we hopefully help them succeed. And there've been some where I think we've had successes from meeting with them, or if we hadn't been out there regularly meeting with them, learning about their opportunities for growth and opportunities to leave the county. We've been able to keep them here and say, we'd like to find a place and plan to see if we're in Palatine and assist us for that. I know at least one business that, one of our top lawyers, who ended up leaving the county because it was so long between visits that, at one time, things were going well, they were fine. I don't think we spoke to him again for eighteen months. In between that time, they started booming all the realtors that find a building and end up living in Chesterfield. We're having them more regularly. We would have known they're looking, we would have said, let's try and find you something here in the county. This was now San Air in a bridge. So a good high-tech business that we'd like. But again, our ability to get out and meet businesses sometimes is so limited that there's, there's opportunities and challenges that we're not able to find out about and not getting in the community. So this position primarily would be out there meeting with businesses every day, finding out what's working for them, whether there are opportunities, whether there are pains, how we make that, that's our resources.
So Roxanne can do that herself?
She can, but then each time we meet with a business, then oftentimes we find out there's an issue with utilities or workforce, or they have funding they want to help us connect them with. Or they want to grow and want help finding a suitable location or building, so then, then we're off doing that, which takes time from visiting with businesses. It's, I think we, it's a surprising number for me still. I think we have over five hundred written order businesses in the county. So even for somebody dedicated to that, that's, that's hard to get out regularly to that many, so then you have all the other working duties. Otherwise, it'd be very hard to get out and visit with a significant portion. If we have five hundred, we can get out and visit with a couple dozen. That's such a small percentage of our early business.
Chair, follow up on that. I think the perk to something like this, as well as like a grants writer. By the way, the schools would be more than happy if we got a grants writer to possibly share in that position. It could potentially be a money-making position, and anytime you have a position that actually could bring revenue into the county, that's a plus. So to me, that weighs, you know, when you're looking at eliminating positions, one of those two positions are way more of a positive, you know, side of things rather than a negative. Just something to consider.
Ms. Carmack, that's interesting. I guess what I don't see is a direct line. I don't see a direct line between our economic development, our economic development operation and business economy. I don't see that. Okay, that's, that's, I think, part of my problem is. If the money-making, as you described it, Ms. Carmack, then I would view it one way. I don't, I don't see that, that link at this point. And if you could help me see that link, that, that would be very helpful. Because obviously, if it's generating more businesses and moving to Palatine, that's, that's great. But I see one person, and I don't see the link with the one person, and now you're talking about two. So.
Yeah.
But that, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It just means I'm not aware of it.
Well, I'll give you some more actual information on that, and some of it with economic development, some of this is tangible, we can measure. You know, how many businesses expanded or grew or rented to here and were able to keep here, and some of it's intangible, just making that friendly feel that this is a good place to do business. And hopefully, business owners feel good about that. They want to stay here and tell other people that they know this is a good place for business. When we, twenty eighteen, when we set out on this, first, we started by visiting with a bunch of businesses to try and just learn and get some information from them. So I was doing that, and one thing I heard again and again from businesses was, wow, you're the first person the county's ever set foot in my business. They just want to talk to me about what's going on and learning. Usually, I'm here for a guy that wants to hear for a tax bill. Somebody's calling me to tell me I've got a violation, but I've never had somebody show interest or care, and that meant a lot to them. So you can't, you can't measure that, but I think that helps improve just, just business feel and then wanting to be here and be a part of Palatine. But there is some of it that we can measure, so I guess.
I understand there's some tangible pieces of good development, okay, but there also needs to be some direct. Other than that, we're just, you're not going to be able to make you feel good and there's a tax bill for me.
Yeah.
But. I'd love, I'd love to see that whole area producing more, uh, new businesses.
It's, uh, from my viewpoint on this, this assisted economic development. And I can reflect back to twenty eighteen, because I was one of those businesses that said, where have you guys been? I've been in this county a long time. I've never seen you before. You guys came in with a nice little folder brochure and sit down and chit-chat and talk. Gave a little bit of explanation about everything, and then there was a couple of other businesses down in Henry's Market that I spoke to that you guys have been in and seen. Those kind of touches are things that I think are very, very important. I think they're critical. I think if you want to be serious and listen to the taxpayers of this county, and when I say that, I mean. The, the mantra or the quote has been, we're at ninety-two percent in eight, ninety-two percent of the income in this county comes from the residents. Eight percent comes from the commercial. If you want to make a genuine effort while listening to the taxpayers come in and say, we want our taxes lower. We want our taxes lower. We want our taxes lower. You got to find a way to generate some revenue other than by virtue of these residential houses. The only way that we do that, well, maybe not the only way, but at least a way we do that is to find an opportunity to be more welcoming and be more proactive in how we pursue businesses. I think that you, you, I don't know that I use the same words as Ms. Carmack, that it's a money-producing or money-making. Position, but I think it's a, one that is a productive or creates an opportunity to be productive in terms of operating what we have heard before, like a business. You, you, you need a salesperson. You want to sell some of it. You need a salesperson. That salesperson has been Roxanne and Brett to this point, and I think that if you have that out there, and have the right people. I'm not going to argue that one. Measurable is unquestionably something that, I mean, Brett, you could be very qualified in figuring out how you could get some measurables on that. I think that Mr. Cox brings up a good point with that. You know, we need to be able to, we're going to spend eighty thousand dollars for somebody. We need to make sure that we're getting that in return. How many new businesses do we come in? How many new businesses do we retain? And I can certainly recall some that's left the county and gone to Amelia and other places. So I just think it's a, it's probably a pretty, pretty good place to go if we want to try and promote business. You can't on one hand say, cut the taxes and we don't want any businesses. You're not going to get anywhere with that. You, you got to understand, there's some businesses that have to come in and offset the expense and the responsibilities to the taxpayers in the county. And I think that's a, a means of doing that. So with a dollar amount, like, I, I don't, I don't know. That's not my expertise. I do see some validity of the positions.
About that, wouldn't disagree with anything you say. This is a question of doubling our economic development staff. That's, that's the point, okay? We, we have people out there. This is doubling. Brett, you didn't have the time to do a book now. I understand that. But so the question is, is this the time or end of the year to be doubling it? We're not sure what we're, we think this is worth, okay? This is on a national TV show where I think I feel I'm looking for something that produces a little bit more tangible, measurable. Be intangible today. Absolutely. It's just like having a smile on your face. That's an intangible business world. And so that, that's where I'm at. I'm. We heard last month, revenue neutral. Revenue neutral is my homework. Okay, we've got to have funds to run this county. The question is, how much contribution are we going to ask the citizens to make? And at seventy-three cents, I'm not ready to support a seventy-three cent tax rate. That's just me, okay? And so that's the reason I'm questioning these things. There aren't, there are no bad ideas. They're just financial realities.
All right, hey, Mr. Cox, I agree with you completely on that. It's, it is a matter of, you know, where do we go? How do we get there? And what's the, what's the right, right way to go?
And so as I question this, that's the environment in which it's being questioned is, wow. If I have to find less spending, where do I find, what do I keep that I know is going to get me through the next year and the next year and where we build? We saw a tremendous number of position requests this year, more than one.
Like about fifteen?
It was a way of the big number. And so that, that is, that is a reality, and having a taxpayer not hug you, but not say something nasty to you.
Understand. Understand. Understand, understand, how can you be adding 15? I I get that, but just sort of go down. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Brett. For Aziz's position, you know, the grant writer, the additional economic development person. How do you plan to measure what they do actually accomplish? You know, we get grants right now. So I don't want to come back here a year from now and say, we get extra dollars for grants, you know, for this position. You know, you're going to have to quantify to me, what is the productivity of adding that position to the grants that we're already getting? So I'm just telling. As of here, man, I want to be able to measure the difference.
Yep, and on the grant writer, I had the exact same thought, that that they can help with some of the existing grants, but what we don't want to do is just show next year, they, we did this great thing, we got $150,000 in grants, while they're actually the same grants we were getting last year, it's just a different person, names on the application, that's not, not the intent, so I want to be able to show you, open beyond prior year grants, what new funding will we get?
That's nice, it's nice to say, but the productivity gain that can be achieved, I want to quantify. Same thing with the economic development person. Right now, going back to what Mr. Cox says, I know we're doing good things, but I can't really tell you what those good things are in terms of being able to break a mode across different activities, but what an economic development program looks like. So choose the funnest position when we come back next year, I want to be able to show the impact, okay? We're bringing people into the county, how many people did we bring into the county? How many did we actually recruit? If we retain somebody, enlarge their business, it's a direct result of what we're doing with these positions, I need to be able to see that in some type of report.
I think, I think one thing we've certainly learned through this budget process is the need for more measurables. So you can see, so it's not just, yeah, exactly, so that's that's something we'll be working on to try and quantify some of this stuff better, rather than just, we think it's a good idea, but how do you measure it now?
That was a, or disagree, right back, we need economic development. That's not something we're going to argue about. What we just need to be able to do is to show to the taxpayers, what is the productivity gain from the things that we do where we're adding to the budget?
Mr. Chairman, a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's, it's about the personal property, at an earlier meeting, I said I'd like to be, but but I'm, you know, just thinking, if we injected a million dollars in personal property relief, the $4,500 or less. You and Jamie, everyone's going to answer this, how many vehicles, how many people would that affect?
I can't answer that.
That's sick, you guess.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, I can't go there. I mean, I can tell you how many people we had, number of vehicles we had that qualify for PPTRA, but then to drive that down to just a specific number of locations, okay? We did that at one point. Didn't we? We did that at one point, but I can't.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Tax relief, I think, um, I don't know if it was Mr. Cox or Mr. Williams that said, get rid of the personal property tax relief, lower real estate tax rates, just clean them. I would agree with that. I think doing the personal property tax relief isn't necessarily going to target who you want to target, and and here's my reason, I mean, probably four out of the five of us have a vehicle that's unqualified. I I have one. Are we really who we're targeting? I think you're being, you would be better off doing it with real estate and just keeping that simple and clean.
Real estate is where the tax is being, because that's where the hurt is, okay? Can you match the relief where the hurt is?
Mr. Chairman, one.
Yes.
He's probably sort of the school, somebody that share a grant writer.
We would certainly put the individual, put the individual to work, helping to meet some needs and be able to pay for themselves.
Do you have any money to pay for?
That's the, that's the only way he's asking. And that's.
You shall, you shall determine that. As a board.
Let's go back to the grant writer. I don't support that this year. I don't have any problems with the job, but not this year. I won't push it out, okay? I'm looking, I'm looking for things not to spend money on this year.
Making much.
Maybe.
Very tangible.
It may cost me money. If you get matching grants, it's going to cost me. So I don't see, I don't have any problems with it long term. I'm looking to reduce our expenses, and that's one of the places I'd reduce. We're happy to look at it in the future, but not today. That's I don't disagree with you, it's it's an interesting concept, we'll see if Palatán County can make a paper or something.
I I I would agree with you, and and you're trying, your intentions, I think, are 100% equal to mine, of how do we cut this and make this work? But a little bit different perspective on it might possibly be, as opposed to how we're going to cut it to 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 save or or help the taxpayer. You can cut and get there. You can also increase your revenues and get there. And if you increase your revenues, not by the taxpayers, by a grant, or increase your revenues, you know, by businesses coming in here, that's a little bit different perspective than, you know, we're just going to cut. I I agree, cut, I I'm with you on that, but there's the other side of that, which is create an opportunity for additional revenue. You know, I'll say one more thing, I think the we've been looking for this person for a year, and I close, like, wouldn't, last year's budget, we introduced the the grant writer?
For the procurement manager, you mean?
So the grant writer's brand new?
Yes.
And the $50,000 number, I mean, I me personally, I would sit here and say, I don't know, that how do you guys get to that number? Where you come up with $50,000? Do you get any interest in that? But
I told him I was putting out an application. Rachel.
Have you picked a bus driver? Oh, good, good, good.
So I'm looking to try to layer on.
So let's, so let's, but put it all together, put it all together. But the 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 one thing, back to that 50,000, it's a little bit outside of the box for what local governments do, but coming out of the car business, you know, if I want more car sales, I do what would be called spiffs, or I pay a commission. If you get $50,000 to be a grant writer, and I know Mr. Williams talked about, you know, they go to talk to each of the other departments, but what if you put a percentage on there that gives that person an opportunity?
I don't think you can do that with a grant.
I don't know, I I have no idea. The the commission part of it is what I'm talking about. If they, I don't know the legal aspects of it.
Grants require you do things, but I'd like to go back to what you said, because you just touched on one of my big things, okay? Coming from the private sector. Government spends no time planning revenue. They don't, okay? In the private sector, enormous amounts of time spent on revenue, that's because you have to figure out how you want to get it, government just says, ah, send another bill to the taxpayer, that's a monopoly. And I think we absolutely should be doing more of exactly what you're talking about, like this, planning and spending money on how to create revenue. Once again, what I don't see is the kinds of links to that that I'd like to see that makes me want to bite, okay? But conceptually, absolutely. We should, we should have as a budget workshop, what are we going to do to change revenue other than send the bill to the taxpayer? I, you're right on.
Well, you're right, you, that is, you know, coming from the private sector, I mean, I'm always looking for ways to increase my revenue. And I don't have, you know, 30,000 people to send a tax bill to and raise it two pennies and say, okay, I've got 5 million more dollars now, or whatever the number would come out to be. You try to find it both ways, how do you cut in tough times, how do you cut and how do you generate more revenue? In in business, you don't usually cut your wage to profitability.
Not only when you fail.
You don't cut your way to profitability, it does happen real well, but it it's just a different perspective. I I completely agree with, you know, your perspective, one or two. You know, we we just, we've got an issue here, we need to figure out how to work this out. Do the best thing for Palatán County.
Chairman, can we go back to Mrs. Carmack's previous statement, I don't think in an agreement with Mr. Cox now, the efficacy of moving the money to one million for the personal property over to the real estate tax rate and making that 71 cents instead of 73 cents, seems like we have a agreement. I looked at her, I met men over here, you know, Mr. Cox, Ms. Carmack, so that's an important decision. Let's go to the slide that has 73 with the with the million N, okay? Because that tells you what you have to do on the expense side, okay?
All right, so this is what the expense side says, so this equals, if you move Brett, okay, if we remove the personal property relief, we have to include that, then that becomes really 71 cents on the tax side.
It's it's very close to it, how much more? 120,000, so we would need to find another 120,000 shot. We could certainly do a part of it we talked about just now. Of the grant writer, one thing too, might be a good option is maybe to step into it and see what kind of interest and need there is, that's something that might suit the self-well of internship as well. Get a college student, maybe they work for us part-time, and learn what the opportunities are out there, if you find out there's not that much, well then we didn't, we didn't lose much with internship, we found out there's there's time there more than the student can be busy with, then we'll talk to you next year about this, that could be a way for us to explore that.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing, when I look at all these cuts, nothing came out of our CIP, really, or CIP, which some of that we're funding as we go, i.e. the private project, the $50,000. Hang on, where is it? Okay, so 565. The 565, 215, that was what you did last night with the shared vehicles. So it comes out 24 because we put it into 23. So and then fiber, we get 350. You moved out 350 of the fiber. My point being is some of the I think I could go look at the CIP and probably will at some of that down. I mean, just, I'm just saying, I think there's still a lot of luck in our CIP that we could probably take out.
The CIP number is up there, let's go back to the IT 700,000, okay? Is any of that in there?
That's 350.
350, so we've got, we have that, okay? So 350 and what we moved last night really makes up for the.
The 565.
Okay, so that's just too high.
Correct.
This is Carmack, we got to learn on my pocket knife, and she can fix that for us. I'd like to raise another issue about a raise, about two raises. We have raises for the chief deputy clerk of court and raise for chief deputy sheriff. We're going to treat our constitutional, if we do that, we're going to treat treat our constitutional officers differently than we're treating the county staff. We told the county staff, we're going to wait till we do the comp and class, and we're going to then come over the pros. I don't want to have two different tracks on personnel in terms of races. This makes no, no difference to the budget it looked up, those those numbers are too small, but I think we should be treating all of our personnel officers on both the county side and on the constitutional side, so I I have that's a conceptual thing in terms of how we're going to manage our comp and class, and I would like to see it consistent.
So I'm confused. The CIP reduction, I'm going to go back to where we were back up to that, to that. Are you saying the 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 565,000 is really, we've already reduced that?
No, only 215,000. So last night, we asked you to basically accelerate a portion of the shared vehicles, not the equipment or any of that, but the actual purchase of five of them to 23. So we had to remove that out of our numbers in 24, because we moved them into 23, so it just shuffles some of the capital maintenance reserve money from into 23 that you would have used in 24, and some of the used up.
120,000, 25,000?
215.
215, and then the other 350?
Was the splitting the five projects into two years.
Okay, so we're going to split that into F524 and F525, right? And that's using it right there.
Yes.
In order to get to the 73 cents tax rate includes the personal property.
So there's a, so the, the budget was built around, so when we start talking about CIP and cutting CIP, there is a certain portion we can cut that is being paid from some of the recurring dollars. We were trying in the last couple of years to not solely focus on what's in the capital maintenance reserve, because prior to having the balance we have in our capital maintenance reserve, there were years where we couldn't even adopt our CIP, because we look like I'll, I know at a given point in time what my capital maintenance reserve is at the end of the year. So I would say, okay, I only have $750,000, so that's all we're going to fund, say at op, at the budget time, what we're going to adopt, and then when we finalize the fiscal year, we come back and adopt the the rest of the CIP in October, hoping we had more capital maintenance reserve. So it's a little different philosophy. So I just want to caution, whatever we do decide to cut, that we can only go to the level of what we're using some of our new money with, and not the capital maintenance reserve, because that's one-time funding, so it's not going to help you with the tax rate for this year, as we're using fund balance. Does that make sense?
So your capital fund, if you back up a little bit on that, when you first started there, the number you just kind of tossed out was, we'd be in a position where you'd look at the capital fund, and you would say, oh my gosh, we got $750,000 in there to take care of all of our CIP capital improvement projects. Did I hear that right?
That, that happened one year.
One year?
One year.
Okay, so, so wait a minute, so, so my question to you, 750,000 one year was in our capital?
In the capital maintenance reserve, it was the assigned portion of the excess of the 15% fund balance. Now, it's been a while since we've been there.
It's in the capital fund.
It's not actually, it's not a fund, it's an assignment of our fund balance, it's actually part of our general fund.
Right.
So it doesn't actually get moved to the capital projects fund until you tell me I can move that portion of fund out. But it is, it's tracked separately on the spreadsheet, I keep up with it.
Like this spreadsheet.
That's the, all the current, current projects that you've, that have already been, the money has already been moved out of the capital maintenance reserve to fund these projects.
Right.
This stuff could go back three or four years.
It could go back three or four years, and I think that's right. So when I look at this, what's the total amount of money Palatán County has in this fund?
In the capital projects fund? So there's a difference between the capital maintenance reserve and the capital projects fund, so what you're looking at is the capital projects fund.
Right.
That's what's already been taken out of our assigned fund balance over several years and used to fund or.
It's money sent in the bank to pay for these capital projects. I I get it.
For a bond, just that bonds.
Either way, what, how much money's in there? Would it be the number or close to the number that I read on the sheet? Says cash balance?
Should be, as of April.
$21 million?
Oh, that's not what left. That's, that's an accumulation, so that, that's an accumulation.
Go ahead, I want to know that number, that's what, that's what I'm looking for, is that number that we have.
Because that's tracking the project from inception, so some of those, like the LMR project that started in 2014.
Three to four years old.
Some of them, well, LMR goes back 2014, 2015. Yeah, we have the funding in 16, that the project started, that far back.
Just seems to be a a pretty substantial amount of money. Just seems to be a pretty substantial amount of money that's left over.
But that's not, that's not what's left.
It's in there. Sixteen, twenty-eighteen bonded projects on it, FY twenty-three. Yeah, a few days ago. But it's in there, for example, you know, it says that Village Park, we had everything over the past year that was budgeted fifty thousand dollars for. This is as of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. There was twelve thousand five hundred forty-two dollars left in there, so there was only spent an expenditure of thirty-seven thousand towards that Village Park.
So you're looking at a fall of twelve thousands? You're looking at a fall of twelve thousands?
Yeah, everything, yeah, you could go into, like the Eastern Convenience Center, you know, that has a balance of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's a bond, but there's five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars listed in that bond. The village building, uh, village building pavement, there's sixteen thousand left over in that.
So, you're right, it is twenty million dollars in there right now. But part of that.
How much?
Twenty million. But part of that is not all just general fund money. It's bonded money, it's CBT A money that's been transferred into there to pay for projects that we haven't designated yet.
When I looked at this, Charlotte, I started looking, and I said, you know, this is a lot of money. And I saw, the projects are pretty recognizable.
And some of those will change.
We talk about them all the time.
Yeah, and some of that will change after last night's projects would be unappropriated that we're not going to spend money on. I had an update this February twenty-eighth because I do, we do it once a month at the end of the month.
So.
So there's more spending that has occurred. There's money in there for projects that have not started yet.
Yep. Well, I mean, there's clearly projects in here that basically are completed, and there's money still left showing there. So my question to you would be this. Let's just say, for example, not what's on this, just for an example, if there's two hundred thousand dollars left over on an item of a project, capital project, that we didn't use, can you move that money to another, back to the general fund?
Not without your permission.
Okay, so the board of supervisors can move that money back there. And there's twenty million dollars in that. That's what I'm looking at.
The only ones that we have, that we have to look at carefully is the bonded projects money. Because there's either we have to say we're going to use it to pay for debt service, or we're going to use it for something else in the CIP so that I can meet the bond and just move back to the general.
Kind of like Mr. Cox's grant writer. We can't pay him a commission because there's stipulations to have.
Right.
I understand that. That's one part.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Charlotte, we're not going to be using anybody from the capital projects or from the capital maintenance reserve fund, taking anything, we said we're not going to no longer do that in either one of those budgets. That doesn't do anything to help us with the operating budget in terms of, we don't use one-time money.
Correct. If it's being funded from capital maintenance reserve, it won't help you with your reducing your tax rate. But what I was trying to explain is that we built in some revenue to cover some cash funding that is from the existing recurring revenues. And I can give you that right now.
I'm glad you're trying to work that up. So, how much, how much are we using for recurring funds to fund capital projects? That's as you go.
Well, it's all, yeah.
But how much in this budget do you have with recurring funds that are paying for capital projects?
Oh, she's looking that up. We can transfer some money according to her if we wanted to, from the capital projects fund into the general fund. You know, for, to use the Village Park.
Correct. You can, you can transfer it to the general fund. My point being is, do you want to do that and use that as one-time money? Because that's not recurring.
I see what you're saying. I know what you're saying. Yes, yes. You're not guaranteed you're going to get that income next year.
Well, we will. That's the distinction I'm trying to make, okay? But what I want to know right now, if we are using recurring revenues in this budget to pay for a capital project, how much is that dollar now?
Exactly. Can we use this?
You got it. You got it.
I don't know that I could.
From myself, I did this, but I.
I don't know that I could answer Mr. Williams' questions, but it's kind of like with a bond. You know, you can use those funds for certain designations. There are different designations to where you can apply that money.
The bond money?
Yes, in addition to where it sits here.
Where I'm going, where I'm going was the issue about, yeah, you can apply them to different things, but you don't want to apply them for operating expenses in your budget that would be one-time money. That's what I was trying to say. Now, let me move to my next question. When we're talking about this three hundred and fifty this year and three fifty next year for the FYP, that's an IT project, correct? Okay, and that's an expansion of the, I would say, the wide area network that we have in this county?
Yes. Sorry, I still.
Okay, I don't know what the wide area network looks like, and my understanding is, for us to get a return on investment is there around the fifteen-year range. Is that correct?
Or, like I think our IT director said, seven to fifteen, somewhere in that range.
Oh, that's like hand grenades and horseshoes. Okay, seven to fifteen, that's a widespread, okay? You can't manage like that. Nobody's going to go ahead and lay down money with a spread of seven to fifteen years. So I want to know, and also want, it's fifteen years, we need to know that. And I also want to know, how does this particular section, how does this fit into our wide area network plan for the county? I want to do this, not just going in and doing things, you know, knee-jerk, we're going to connect this. We ought to have a plan for a wide area network in this county on how we communicate as a government.
Yeah, and the, the point itself, that, that is very real, and we can show that, the potential return on investment, that, that is always going to be, I think, hard to quantify. We can maybe show better numbers together, a better idea of what potential return on investment would be, but that's always going to be some, some assumptions. But exactly where the infrastructure is, what capabilities, redundancies it brings, that's.
Exactly. Are those dollars coming out of our operating budget? Are they being funded over our operating? Three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand coming in? Now, I've got an even bigger problem. Because I don't think we need to do that.
So, we asked about the seven hundred thousand, what would happen if we eliminated, what would be the impact on this budget? And the answer was, it would reduce seven hundred thousand for one year, okay? Because it's not.
But he just said, he just said that, you said that this is coming out of monies that are recurring expenditures in our operating budget to pay for the three fifty?
We're proposing some, and CIP is a whole, some recurring revenue that's in PEGO.
But I want to know, how much are we using in this budget, recurring revenues to fund capital projects? That's the question. Because whatever we do with those recurring revenues that we're allocating for capital projects can potentially reduce or even increase, depending on what we want to, you know, our budget.
I mean, I had it based on the seventy-five, though, so a lot of things have changed. If we are looking at seventy-three, I have to go back in and calculate what that is.
Seventy-three for personal property.
Okay, I can recalculate that. I calculated it at the seventy-five, and it was, it was over a million dollars, one point three million dollars that we had done.
So when we were at the seventy-five proposal, that was one point three million?
To support CIP.
Right, coming out of operate.
And three point one coming from the capital maintenance reserve. Which is definitely, that's the one, which, right now, as of June thirty of twenty-two, our capital maintenance reserve is a little over five million. So my, our intent was not to drain all of that to pay, so we have, we're not issuing, no, we have chosen to do some leases to try not to issue any debt. We were trying to kind of split the, split the cost. But that's, you know, if we want to go back to either readjusting, I guess I was just bringing it up so that if there is any CIP that you want to shift out or something to help with the tax rate, then we only have a certain amount of recurring dollars that we're using. If you start shifting, when you go beyond that, you do it one time.
What is the amount?
Well, it was, when we had seventy-five cents, it was one point three million for seventy-three.
Now, we're asking, if we go to seventy-three with personal property, which is almost seventy-one, what is it then then? That's, that's the question I think is before us.
Yeah, I'd have to do some math on that.
Oh, she's working on the math. Right, as I understand it, we still have salaries built in this budget at seven percent?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and we know it's going to go, we know in the skinny budget for the schools is already going to five percent. Okay, so why shouldn't we be looking at a five percent raise instead of seven?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, the seven percent was being driven, as I understood it, by the schools and the funding that was being.
Well, some of the government put in.
Yeah, and now they've eliminated that, so we go back to five percent. That saves, I mean, it's the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you have on the school budget going over there, and then that saves money on the county side, and it also saves on benefits.
Is it for sure five percent?
I can speak up to it a little bit. The skinny budget was meant to correct the grocery tax and harvests. They also approved something for twenty-four, but the Senate and House are still behind closed doors debating between the final school allotment. But both of them, as presented when they first proposed their amendments, included seven percent. So that was the reason why we.
But the superintendent of education, you've got the email, okay, which I left you this morning, shows that they are no longer funding the two percent.
In the skinny budget, correct.
Okay, so the superintendent of education said there's no, the two percent is out.
Does the superintendent of education have a vote in the general assembly?
No, but he absolutely has to put out what's, she has to put out what's going on and what you're going to do, and is providing all the calculations for all of the counties.
And I, I get where you're at with that. I don't disagree with that, but I don't think it's finalized. I mean, the House and Senate vote on it, and the skinny budget is what the superintendent of schools, for the DOE, is saying. They want everybody to look at five percent. But it's not a done deal, because the House and Senate hadn't voted yet.
Well, no, it depends on which item you look at, okay? He's, he's got the detail, okay? I don't have a witness or a document to you. It shows each line, whether the House or the Senate took an action on it or not.
Right.
Okay, or whether this is an interpretation. As I read it, it's five percent. That's.
Right.
These were items that were not included in the reconciliation. Until it's finalized, of course, anything can change. You're absolutely right.
Right, they could be, be whatever.
But we need, we need, whether we change it now or not, we need to know what that two percent is worth on both, of both the county and schools.
I like the idea of knowing what the two percent's worth. I think on four hundred and fifty thousand on the schools, sounds right.
You got that right.
I don't know what it is for the county's side of it.
But it's going to come up, it's going to be a penny's worth. If it's five percent, that difference is going to be a penny, so.
Yeah, I get where you're going with that. You know, four fifty at, at schools and five hundred and fifty thousand in the county money on a two percent.
I don't know what two percent of the county.
Yeah, I don't think.
But if the county's less employees than the schools.
Much, much less, okay, but we don't have to pick up a hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Right, exactly.
That's easier than the other question. The other calculation I'm trying to.
And until, until the state passes the budget, there's, there's not a crystal ball. So there's, either way, there's pros and cons. If we guess right, well, it doesn't matter. If we guess wrong, either way, if we include the two percent in our budget and if the state doesn't do it, well then, we've inflated our budget by roughly a million more than it needs to be. Now, we wouldn't immediately go and spend that money. We couldn't spend that money, but we will pass the tax rate, probably higher than it needs to be if on something that doesn't happen. Alternatively, if we take it out and if the state does it, then we're going to have to come back to and find a way to find another million later in the year, which is very difficult, right, as a tax rate? Or not do it. That's an option, but then presumably others in the region will be doing it, and then we're spending time and money on class and common to correct things and get ourselves more competitive, and then we're immediately, same year, taking a step back from the localities. There are pros and cons to both, and unfortunately, it's as ever, the state is not helping us because they're behind in making their own decisions, splitting out conflicting information. So, we propose to include it, assuming it will happen since it's been in both. And if it doesn't, then, again, that would be revenue that we don't need. But we're not using it. We have to figure out to you all how we, how we deal with that. That's, that's why we still show it in our proposals.
Charlotte, you were calculating.
I'm still working on it. I don't want to give you a wrong number, so.
Could we go to comp and class? We have, what, a million dollars set aside for that?
One, one, one point one, I think. We took the, the two million out.
Okay, I don't, I don't see us pumping out a million dollars in the twenty-four budget. Fact is, I don't want to pump out a million dollars in the twenty-four budget. The question is, should we spread that over two years? That number. That, that's a, that's a question from my peers here.
Hard to say. It's not how long, it's going to be, you know, it's.
We don't know, we don't know if it's going to be two million. We don't know if it's going to be a half million.
Yeah.
But you're only going to pump it out so fast.
It's going to be a lot more than what it's been. That's not an answer, but it's going to be a lot more, be a substantial amount more money. But you can go back to what a, a previous board did, when they paid, they have a comp and plan, a pay plan study done, where they were suggested, you have Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, and this is what you have. This is what we recommend. And that board says, man, we like Plan D, because we don't have any money to do A, B, and C. So let's do Plan D, make our own board, make our own amount. I mean, that's, and we could do that. I mean, that could, that's what we could see from this comp and pay plan. It could be, you know, they suggest X, Y, and Z, and we consider.
You're going everybody's hell. I'm not doing A, B, and, you know, what's behind this door, what's behind that door.
It's not a question. They tell you what A, B, and C is, what the three choices are. And then you say yes or no.
The question, the question was, we have a line item below over a million dollars, okay, for comp and class. Should we change that? Should we reduce it? Or, you want to increase it? That's a number that we haven't discussed. That's a number that Brett gave to us. I don't know where it came from. I, I, it sounds to me like it's more that we're going to pump out in twenty-four. If you're going to take comp and class, you're going to do it over a series of years. You're not going to do this one year.
I think what would be helpful is if we, where do we want our tax rate? I mean, you know, where do we want it to be? We can consider, should we cut this? Should we do this? Should we do that? And all that's good, but if you don't have a target where you're cutting to, it's for not. I think we're kind of doing this backwards. Yeah, exactly. I mean, do we, I mean, where do we want to be? Sixty cents, seventy cents? Where, where do we want to be? I mean, I think that would be helpful if we, if we give a tax rate.
I did what I know. Since we're cutting about the personal property. It would be sixty-nine cents. Let's go from there. Sixty-nine cents.
The two pennies over the effective interest rate, kind of what we did last year.
Yep. We did, made it work back, we made it work easier. Sixty-nine cents.
All right, so that means grant writers gone, economic development gone. Now, now, now you're, now you're into picking up a million and a half more, a million and a half more reductions than we have right there, so.
Two point one, then we got a couple of seventy percent, seventy percent. But, but we still don't have the number. If we move out the CIP and use these, this capital project fund to fund a lot of our PEGO CIP projects, that's a lot of money. But that, that's not going to help you cut the tax rate. Moving those to other CIP, that's not going to help you.
No.
It will help part of, part of what I'm trying to calculate. It will help part of, part of what I'm trying to calculate, but unfortunately, there's a lot of factors, and I wanted to get the wrong number. And that was one point, probably around one point six million, we probably have, that we can cut out of where we're using recurring dollars for CIP. But that's not going, then you got to dig more, but that's just a rough number, because I really would like to do the math correctly and not give you an incorrect number. But I'm just saying, what, that, I'm not telling you can't do what you're doing there to cover some of the projects, I'm saying that's not going to help you cut the tax rate. You have to cut other projects, move them either, you can use some of that. I don't know if we have one point six million dollars in there, it's all money.
Well, so should be having, just, just a conversation. We had one and a half million dollars, okay? That we're, we're using reoccurring money to fund capital projects. And we take that, and we say, no, we're not going to do that. That reoccurring money is going to stay over here. And we take money from the capital projects fund and spend it on those capital items, one point five million, that does help the budget.
It, it does. I just don't know, I know it looks like a lot of money in there, and there is, but there's a lot of projects that haven't started that has that money. And so you either have to decide you're not going to do some of them, even twenty-three projects, as well as, there, but there is some, and I just haven't done the math to see how much.
Well, that, that, that's a, that's a wonderful.
Uh, uh, to me, twenty million dollars doesn't look like a lot of money. That is a lot of money. I, I still look at yours in the head.
I, I'd like to further emphasize that any cuts to CIP is one-time savings.
Yeah.
Even, even though we have those recurring revenues, if we reduce the rate, then we have to keep in mind our out years, especially as we're using our forecast. It, it would have to be from recurring dollars, recurring expenditures as well.
I mean, constituents.
I turn the fan on.
It might be my age part, but I don't know, but. She's like, oh dang.
Oh, all right, so we have, you know, we have potential dollars in salary, we don't know what's going to happen there. We have potential dollars, which, who they told, we need to be careful in terms of reoccurring money being used capitalized or placing that, okay? So there's money there. Potentially.
Mm-hmm, potentially.
Potentially, okay, so there's two pots that are undetermined that we don't, and they add up to a fair amount of money, okay? In terms of pennies, pennies for tax rate. This is seventy-one cents. Uh, if we get away, you know, we do away with the personal property, and Mr. McHoney says he wants with sixty-nine cents, uh, which.
No personal property.
Huh?
No personal property.
No, 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 yes, okay. Uh, that means you've got to find another, uh, million, million dollars.
Can you say it again? And that, the seventy-three cents tax rate, what was that going here? This is, what's on the screen now includes putting the, the million dollars of credit towards the.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. But we're not doing that, we're talking about doing away with personal.
So that, just to reduce the. So now, if you're doing, if you're trying to get to speed, you're looking for two pennies.
Yeah, you're looking for a million and twenty, one twenty, one, one point one billion dollars, what you're looking for. So, you, you got to find one of those.
You should approve the money to individuals.
It'd be one point two four million.
Well, I just want to take a really big look on it, because twenty million is a lot of money, I'm not, I'm not pretending that it's not, but there's things in here, like three million dollars that's from Arco for broadband, there's, um, one point six million for fire equipment that we are currently have, uh, part of it, we have ordered, uh, that takes a year, so there isn't, but there are some smaller projects. Like, I can tell you one of those, that you guys have never really decided what you wanted to do, was the remaining money from the courthouse extension parking. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy.
Exactly. There are, there are areas that, uh, you've got, you know, one point eight million is your fire station one, so that's committed. So, we just have to go through and look at, at some of these.
I don't think it's going to take you long.
That, I would do want you, this part of the money that's in here is the school construction money, that is actually belongs, state money that comes from the school. So, I have to just go through and pinpoint ones that I think we can specifically look at, um, and, you know, there is places like this, the elementary, um, that's part of the bond money, the train project, there's money left in there that we can, that we can use. So, there are things in there, I'm not trying to say not, not to, I'm trying to say not to, I just want to look at them first.
I understand that, but I think that you come back to us, you know, and, and let us know where that situation is. Let's, you know, give us a, a solid way around it.
Okay, sure.
I'm confused. I'm not surprised as everybody, but you're going through, you know, bond projects, and you're saying, we have this money left over. You just say, saying that, you know, for bond projects, we can't use those monies, you know, for our operating budget.
You can't. You can use them for other CIP projects, that are.
That's where, that's where I'm going, okay? What I need to know is to differentiate between those projects, you know, where they got fences around them, and we can't use them for operating budget, versus the ones that we can use them for operating budget, and how much does that tow? That's what I'm looking for. You go into Tommy's question. Tommy, you said, got to be careful, you know? Even though they are, okay, these cases, it's not from recurring revenues. Okay, these are one-time monies that are sitting out there, whatever, while the two pots. You said be careful, because they're not coming from recurring revenues. Is that correct?
They, the expenditures are one-time savings, correct?
Expenditures are one-time. So if we put them in our operating budget, what happens?
The, I'm sorry, can you clarify?
If you're using recurring dollars to pay for those, then you can put it in. It's all about how the dollar is generated. Where your, where your funding sources come from. If your funding source is recurring revenue, then you can take it and use it for operations. If your funding source is one-time.
That's where, that's where I'm trying to understand.
To, to clarify, the one-time expenditures, if, if the intent is to reduce the expenditures by reducing recurring revenues, then you only have those savings in that one year. Then the following year, you have no savings and expenditures, but the revenues are still lower.
So we're interested in the amount, the amount right now that we have with recurring revenue on schools that are going to fund capital projects. So, you said, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So she's going to give us that dollar amount, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carr.
Yes, Mr. Carr.
If, um, I don't know, we, we can get that, but if we could get a agreement that sixty-nine cents the number, or whatever the number is, I personally think that we should have, Brett, you're the quote-unquote CEO of the county. It's your job to make it work.
He gets the game of the ball?
Yes. If you think a grants writer should be in the budget, put it in. You know, I mean, it's, you think that's going to make your job easier, the county run better, the county get revenue, put it in. If you think that we shouldn't, you know, look at the CIP projects, look at, you know, that's, that's really for you, and that we should kind of take the overview. I mean, I don't think we need to get into total line item detail, and we have, all of us are guilty of that. But I think, um, that is personally what I would want to see done. You know, if we can agree on a tax rate, find it.
Can we make a motion?
You want the floor? You want the floor? You asked for the floor, that's what you did, yeah. Mr. McClellan has the floor, hang on one second.
To help with the staff, help Brett, help everybody at this table, and this is the power band. I'm recommending that we set the, they'll say tax rate at sixty-nine cents. This year.
Are we?
With no personal property tax.
So you're setting, you're making that as a motion?
Yes.
That the tax rate be set at sixty-nine cents with no personal property tax for fiscal year twenty-four?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Floor's open for conversation. Mr. Gage.
I heard, oh, oh, I, I was just waiting in line over here, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Wade.
I'll go at the back of the room. Man, it's hard. What do you expect from a bus driver?
I'm glad it's a workshop, you don't have to go through the chair, all right? I agree with Mr. Carr, uh, he has the big lots, he can make the decision. But what I don't want to do, I don't want to put him in a recurring position where he has to do something that he doesn't want to do, that he knows he's got to get to a certain rate, and he doesn't have any good choices. We don't really are aware of the boxwood painting dimension. I mean, I think it's, it's good to be going out, if you want to advertise, you know, a different rate, then have him to work on different scenarios, and then make an informed decision about where the cuts are going to have to come from. That's a different proposition. But I agree, you work off of where you want to go. But at the same time, you want to make sure that you're fully informed, okay, what that means. I don't, I don't, like I said, I want to know, Charlotte's over here crunching numbers right now.
She's sweating.
Please, please don't take off anymore, no.
I just don't want to say the wrong number.
We'll get a fan, okay?
Yeah, but if, if, if the board wants to see, um, you know, whether it takes to get to sixty-nine, absolutely, we can do that, and there is a way for us to get there. I think, I'm sitting here tonight, I can't tell you what we would, would not be able to fund, but we can immediately work on that, bring you something. Do it tonight, we want to make sure we have the correct numbers.
Yeah, I mean, but, but, you know, according to Mr. McClellan's, you know, point, you know, this is something to work off of. We, I don't want to necessarily set it, you know, tonight, we can, you know, we can do it. I think we have to do that Monday night. Okay, so, we can do that Monday night, you know, with more information, you know, but I like the idea of sixty-nine cents. And I like Mr. Karmak's idea of letting him, if it stands to do it.
Yeah, 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 I, I think we're right.
So it becomes a target.
Target, yeah.
Okay, so, the, the, one caveat, uh, charge Brett for doing that, but also charging with his responsibility to come back to the board if he sees this is not workable, and he says, no, alternative. I, I, you know, for these reasons, I'd like to see it at seventy cents if you will, okay? But, and then we can make an informed search, yes. But, if we're going to, we're going to pull, pull from him and his expertise, let's pull it in all directions, okay? So. The, um, motion on the floor.
Here, here, here.
Would you, would you like to withdraw your motion of sixty-nine cents? Or, I don't have an or, well, I do have an or. There can be a, a motion, an amended motion like we would have.
A motion to target sixty-nine cents. If it is doable, we can administer it with our, a target of sixty-nine cents. Real estate.
So. We're a little bit out of bounds with this. That amends the, that's exactly what we did last night. That amends the first motion, need a second. I'll say it. Um, then, at that point, we can do exactly like we did last night. The amended motion is to target sixty-nine cents. You guys all in favor of that? Say aye. Well, with, with the caveat, the understanding that Brett is going to come back with a target budget of sixty-nine cents, and going with the COC, if for any reasons he finds out that just doesn't work, what Scarmack said, using his expertise, his knowledge, then he will come forward with something other, and sixty-nine, is that amenable to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, but I think that's where the board, we are in agreement that we want to be at sixty-nine.
Yeah.
I think, you know, at that, the goal.
But if he comes back and says, you're going to have to try and poison the power tank counter, if we can't do it, he can come forward with, you know, why, I need sixty-nine. Yeah.
That's fine. I, I'm, sixty-nine cents is good by me.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Uh, so, let's just leave it at that? Is that fair enough with everybody that's here?
Yep.
We're going to target sixty-nine, we come in Monday night, say sixty-nine cents is workable and doable, and we're going to do that, this is what we're going to.
Come on, and so does some of the fourth Monday house.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 yeah. But, yeah, and then, Charlotte, you got to work all day, you can't go home tonight.
I'll dream about it, then I'll sleep on Thursday.
I'll have to ask the superintendent of the car charity, is there any direction on us working with schools on that? Do you want to see us stick to the school transfer, ask for the U.S. standard, or do you want us to work with them as well, or find them all on the county general?
That's for you now. It's your box, okay? You got that, so, we're moving on. Public comment period. The floor is open for anyone in the public. Not seeing anyone, everyone all good? Not hearing anyone? We'll close the public comment period. County administrator comments?
Uh, no comments, we've got to get to work.
Board comments?
You know, better have a party.
Yeah. All right, all right, okay, no comments. We're adjourned.